All right, seven there.
Yeah, we got seven o'clock.
Should we do it?
All right.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Let's do it. We got our.
I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Meeting of January 10th, 2022. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, we have our consent agenda ready for a roll call vote. Are there any questions?
So first, the roll call, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, sorry.
General call, item number three.
Sorry. The clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Chester.
Steve.
Here.
All right. Now we can, I believe, move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we did get an email from Garnett. Two typos that were found in the minutes. Page four, the Kala Dumpster Agreement Motion. It says, quote, "to approve the approved." So some corrections need to be made there. Page five, item F, Mount Bald Head Proposal, should read workgroup, not workshop.
Anything else?
It's from our correspondence from Garnett.
Okay. If nothing else, would the clerk, please call the roll?
No, we have a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to prove the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Motion carries. Moving on to staff reports.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, happy to help out with these staff reports. The city manager report starts on page 12, goes through page 14. I'm just going to hit a few highlights if it's okay with council. Pleased to announce that Kate White has accepted the position of project coordinator. Kate just got her master's degree in public administration with a minor in sustainability, has GIS capabilities, has been doing an awesome job for the city. So it's our pleasure to have Kate as part of the permanent team here for the city. Moving on, pop-up patios. Obviously, we've spent some time discussing pop-up patios, have made numerous presentations regarding that, got a lot of feedback. Staff is going to be presenting recommendations, our first round of recommendations at your January 19th workshop. Traffic light study by Allegan County Road Commission, that's come through. I've attached it to my city manager report. The highlight of that report is that both Old Allegan Road and Lake Street meet the traffic warrants for signalization. So it was not based on crash, it did not meet the crash warrants, but it did meet the traffic volume warrants. So they're talking about the potential of a roundabout at Old Allegan. And so I think the road commission is in discussions with the township on that. And then eventually, Allegan County Road Commission is going to be looking towards the city for what they would like to do at Lake Street. So meets the warrants, a lot more conversations to take place. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, great report. Is there going to be a chance to post this out on the city website so the public can see it? Yeah, absolutely. Correct people to it? Yeah. Sure. People are going to be very interested in the results here. Yeah, exactly. And that's why we put it in the packet. We can get on the website as well, so. And then two is, we have two traffic lights out here. Can we give a deal to the township if they choose to put one up? They kind of have. Let's make a deal. Yeah. So, and really more, my comment is, at what point do we need to provide feedback to the county road commission on the city's thoughts about Blue Star and Lake? I think we're going to, the city is going to move at its own pace. As the Blue Star Trail plans continue to be developed, I think it's going to be the impetus. That's going to be the catalyst for a traffic light conversation for the city. Okay, because I saw nothing in the report that indicated expecting feedback from either the township or the city at this point, but. Yeah, in talking with the road commissioner, he said he will be looking toward, for the city to provide feedback on what they'd like to do. Okay. Yep. So, yeah, conversations will continue as we go throughout the year. Thank you. You're welcome. On the website, one second. Moving on with the report, again, just the highlights of Blue Star Trail. Speaking of which, we did hear back from the Michigan Department of Transportation. Their application review committee said, hey, this is a great application. They're going to, they're going to accept it. I put some of the highlights of what they had to say about the Blue Trails, Blue Star Trail system. There's a, there's a few engineering items that still need to be worked out. So our engineers are very well aware of them. And they're in conversations with the review committee. And we'll see what comes of it. I mean, we're talking about some detailed stuff, like tangents of curves and like railings and bats and trees, like some pretty detailed stuff, which they're, this, this firm is not accustomed to actually getting this type of feedback. So it's kind of new to them, but they're going to work, work with the MDOT and get through it pretty quickly. They're confident that they'll be able to answer the questions and submit by, at a minimum, February 23rd. So we shouldn't lose too much time on this.
Yeah, I took it as a positive because they said three different times, three different ways that this application is competitive and it's worth seeing everything through. And I take it as a good sign.
Yeah, I mean, and just to mention for the record, I guess, you know, they say it will fill a gap in a local, regional, and cross-country system, USBR 35, that's what they have, the name for the trail. The area along Blue Star Highway has numerous businesses. New path will attract customers and provide a way for workers to get to their jobs without the need of cars. The improved connection to the separated bike lane in Douglas will create a more seamless connection between the two communities. What's not mentioned is also the school system and people being able to get to the school via the trail. So very positive overall, so.
Yeah, we hit the marks for transportation alternatives, literally to connect the communities and to get people around. We've, we've hit it, hit those marks.
So congrats to the, to the committee that's worked on this. Last page of my report, just AT&amp;T and Verizon cell service. I know this is based on our resident feedback, number one priority, and hear a lot from our tourists as well. So we continue to work with AT&amp;T. We're really trying to push them towards the macro cell technology. Cindy and I also had a conversation about downtown Wi-Fi. That seems like a kind of a longer process and a longer project to get through. But we're still asking them again to focus on the macro cell technology. Verizon, they still plan on getting microcell technology up and running by the first quarter. So at a minimum, we will have Verizon with the microcell before our summer season begins. Also, I should mention, and it's in Cindy's report, that we're talking to Holland Public Utilities about their fiber that they have, which actually goes downtown Sagatuck to the bank. And talking to them about the potential of expanding their fiber downtown. So we're talking to three different entities, you know, we're trying to partner with them. Obviously, we, their, their analysis is based on financials and what makes sense for them. But we're really trying to encourage them to, to work with the City of Sagatuck. So those are the updates on that. And happy to answer any questions on the report, if there are any.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, just wondering about Maple Street. And it sounds like the township, what was the township's take on when or if they wanted to get involved in that project and whether we can start any part of that project?
Sure. So the township has taken the position, which I think is correct, is in that they don't have any responsibilities for the road surface itself. They don't get any what we call Act $51, which is the state money that comes into maintaining our roadway system. And so their responsibility is really specific to utilities, water specifically. And we know that the water system on Maple needs to be upgraded. It wasn't a priority for them. And so where that leaves us is a discussion on, well, we have a couple of projects that we know, you know, we have deteriorating roadway, you know. But you hate to make like a whole resurfacing project without taking care of the water utilities because you're going to be back there in four, five, six years later tearing up the roadway to do that. So it may require us in doing some like patchwork and just kind of putting some lipstick on the roadway, maybe some micro resurfacing. There's some options for us. But right now, the Sagatuck Township, I guess, in general, does not see the need to take any action at this time.
So the only thing, of course, I was worried about is the erosion issue that's there. And then there's new homes that are there that I assume they're going to need some sort of connection there anyway. So wondering if there's a way to do heavy on the project, if you will.
Yeah, I don't think, we'll continue to discuss it with the township. What I think will end up happening is that we address the issues that we have without making a whole, without doing a wholesale resurfacing of Maple Street.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Buy us a little time, basically.
Okay.
There shouldn't be an issue for the new construction to hook up.
Yeah. Yeah. But as far as the erosion and everything that was happening behind.
Yeah, the major concerns are.
That's kind of a separate.
Wendy's house area, that little creek that runs by there, I think we can address that separately. And then by North Street, where it kind of goes into that wetland area, that base is totally eroded and it's really bad roadway. So we'll probably just have to elevate that with some asphalt. Like I said, just doing some patchwork to buy us some time, a couple of years.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And everyone's waiting to see what's happening with the ARP funding as far as waterline replacements. And so we're going to be kind of just wait and see approach.
Sounds good.
Anything else on the city manager's report? Peter, anything you'd like to highlight from the treasurer's report?
No, I can highlight it when I do the budget adjustment.
Very good, thank you. We have Cindy on. Cindy, anything on the planning and zoning you'd like to highlight for us?
I think it pretty much speaks for itself. If there's any questions that anybody has, I'd be happy to answer.
If you're, if you're speaking Cindy, we can't hear you.
Um.
Okay. Well, Cindy, jump in if there's anything urgent that you want to share on your report. If not, I'll move ahead to DPW. Scott, anything you'd like to share in your report that's pressing?
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem. Are you able to hear me?
Oh, it seems as though the volume is not working.
No, you're not muted, Scott. I think we, I think it's us.
It's on our end.
I think it's us.
Report speaks for itself.
Well, let me, let me jump ahead. Dan, anything you'd like to share from the fire department's report? Okay. Very good.
And to be clear, fire department staff.
All right, well, I think, given that we can't hear from the other folks that are on the call.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
We're going to need it for Eric's presentation.
Right.
I'm here.
Heard you just, I just heard you.
Hello?
Hi Cindy.
Good job, Jamie, thank you. No worries.
All right, we, all right, we've got audio now.
Yeah. Yep.
Cindy, anything you'd like to highlight?
No, just if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good, thank you. Over to you, Scott, anything you want to highlight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Just wanted to point out, we did have an incident learning experience for one of the staff members. We, he was plowing one of the streets and was going up Perryman when he didn't have enough momentum to go up the hill, stopped and then ended up sliding down the hill, getting sideways at one point and got the salt spreader hooked on the guardrail. Luckily, no one was hurt, no one was injured. The equipment is, was easily repaired. Just wanted to bring attention to that. So some of those things behind the scenes that people don't get a chance to see very often. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. I did have the opportunity to go with Scott Herbert on Friday during the snow event and do some plowing. And I was white knuckling it the whole time, like, you're getting too close to these cars, you're getting too close to the guardrail. Scott Herbert is massively skilled with heavy equipment. So Scott, kudos to you. It's an art form. You and your team really killed it during this last snow event. And I'm very appreciative of your team.
Here, here.
Wow, thank you.
Any questions from council on any of the staff reports? Very none, I think we can move on. Any changes to?
Oh, sorry. Police, I think lieutenant.
Oh, do we have a lieutenant still on?
I think we were going to, have you, did you see?
Hi.
Yeah, you did.
There he is, okay.
Yeah, I don't have anything other than the statistics. It's been, you know, snowy, snow events and, you know, kind of off and on with all those issues that arise. But other than that, not much to add.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Okay, with that, anything else on the staff reports? If not, do we have any, any agenda changes, any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Do we do, are we doing the engineer's report?
It's in the packet.
Okay.
Yep, he's not on the call.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think he's on the call. So I think that covers the staff reports and any, I don't think we have any agenda changes or additions. So with that, I turn it over to our guest speakers, Bobby Gant and David Swan of the Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance Board of Directors.
Good evening, everyone. I think, just to go down memory lane for a moment, oh, I am Bobby Gant and I live in Sagatuck. I think it was 19 years ago this month that I actually first spoke to council. And that was about the SCA. So here we are again. On behalf of David Swan and the Coastal Alliance, I really want to thank all of you. We met with Garn less than a month ago and then got involved with Ryan in terms of bringing this issue to all of you and asking you to allow us to speak with you about it. And I'm not used to government turning that around so fast. So I'm very appreciative that we're here this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to David, the founding member of the Alliance and our president. Thank you.
Thank you very much for setting aside time this evening. And should I be watching that four-minute clock?
We'll help you out.
Thank you very much. So as several of you have continued to remind me, we have a great opportunity at this moment in time, a real opportunity to, one, put the tri-community master plan at work as a guiding prescriptive economic document that it is, two, to be an active voice in how the river mouth will be developed. And the city has been asked to be an active participant by the Army Corps in their reviews. And third, to protect the investments, the tens of millions of dollars our community has spent to preserve the river frontage and the river mouth area for low-impact uses. Bobby and I and the Coastal Alliance feel very confident that the draft letter that we've submitted to the city to sign and submit to Army Corps will help us capture these opportunities. And we've made hard copies and given them to Ryan as well as a thumb drive of supporting documentation, quite a few pages of documentation. If you have not yet read the draft letter, I suggest reading the last section, the conclusion first. It's a very, very good overview of our suggested approach. And I feel the need to answer a few questions at the outset. First, we are not asking the city to issue an opinion on legal proceedings. This letter is specific to ongoing, and I stress ongoing, and current US Army Corps of Engineer review process. They're conducting three reviews, public interest factors, Section 106 Historic Properties Review, and a NEPA review. And again, these reviews are open and ongoing, even though the first public notice went out in 2017. To clarify, the Coastal Alliance has appealed the township permit to clarify a few of the legal proceedings currently underway. We have appealed the township permit for a planned unit development and a special approval use. And we've recently appeared before the Michigan Supreme Court to debate whether the Alliance even has standing to question the merits of that appeal. So currently, there is no debate regarding the merits of the appeal. It is specifically about standing. Secondly, we've appealed the state permit on the basis of Part 301, which is part of Act 451 or impacts to inland lakes and streams. It's a very narrow band of Act 451. And this appeal is awaiting trial. We're not asking the city to weigh in or comment on Part 301 or the merits of that appeal. And as you can see in the public notice from 2017, August 2017, Army Corps reviews impacts to about 20 different public interest factors. And many of those 20 public interest factors are described, prescribed in the tri-community master plan, especially the 2005 edition. Our suggested draft letter, and we suggest the city focus on economics and conservation. Those two public interest factors have the greatest amount of detailed prescription in the master plan. We believe the city has a very viable voice with regard to the, the public interest review. The city was, was noticed by Army Corps in 2017. You were also noticed in 2018 for the Section 106 Historic Properties Review. Sagatuck Township has publicly requested, Army Corps, and I quote, "to give due consideration to all the interested parties involved." Also, the city owns more land in river frontage than any other property owner in the river mouth area. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Bobby and I are happy to answer any questions that council might have regarding our request.
Thank you very much.
Look at that, two seconds.
You have two seconds.
Can I reserve my time?
Well, thank, thank you for that, Bobby and David. Thank you very much for, for presenting that to the council.
No que. Please. No questions, but just more of an observation on this process. I want to commend David and Bobby and the rest of the board for the diligent effort. This is all a volunteer effort, has been since the get-go. And the amount, amount of documentation work and citations and so forth in their materials is to be commended. But even more importantly, the effort that they're undertaking is something that I'm passionate about as well. And I think that the city definitely has an interest in this, even though it lies outside of our boundaries. Literally, our natural area is the front porch for this development. Inversely, their property is the front porch for our property, for the harbor area. And I think that, looking forward, you know, tying it back into the tri-community plan, this definitely has an impact on the value and the geographic makeup of our area. So I have no issue at all with the letter that was proposed. I support it 100%. I've met with David personally, talked through some of my questions. And, and I think that the city stands to gain by not having this property developed in the manner that's suggested. Go ahead, Bobby. I'll be happy to answer that.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's up to the council on how they'd like to handle this moving forward. You presented some information, a lot of information, a lot of which I suspect is new information to the council. So, you know, I think they'll take some time to digest it. I'm not speaking on behalf of the council, but if I was a council person, I'd want to understand exactly what's in your letter. I'd also want to discuss with legal counsel for the city if there's anything in the letter that may be harmful if the city was to submit the letter as written. And what I would recommend is that, kind of to Ross's point, that we find some mutual interests and submit a letter that, that is respectful to the township because obviously they have some litigation going on. So there's, there's a few things that we, I would recommend that the city council be cautious on. So it'll, it'll probably take some time to, to get through something to be submitted to Army Corps, but I think there are some mutual interests there. And I think we can, we can get to a letter that we're all comfortable with.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What is your timeframe for submission to Army Corps?
I'd say Army Corps could finish up their review process any day. So I think it's vital that the city discuss and move forward as quickly as possible. Most Army Corps reviews take about three months. We're now entering year five.
Entering what?
Year five.
Year five, okay.
So this is very complicated. There are many, many, many voices involved. The more voices, the better. We continue to learn more and more about the river mouth. As we've recently learned, it's, it meets the criteria to be on the National Register of Historic Places as Michigan's first traditional cultural property, which is a really big deal. So the sooner, the better. I'm happy to help answer legal council's questions, concerns, Ryan and me with you with, with concerns. You have.
And then David, is it true that once the Army Corps does complete their report, then there's still one, I think it's one month that you can still submit your written? It's, it's not a public hearing per se. The city would be submitting it in writing, so there's not like a public hearing that's going to be set. And then after they complete their report, they would, we would still have one month.
I, I hope so.
Okay.
I know I explained that to you when you and I spoke a few weeks back. That is how they have handled the Section 106 Historic Properties Review.
Okay.
With their draft memorandum. Once it's final, I hope they give 30 days, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Russ.
Again, is there any reason to believe that we couldn't get this on the agenda for the 24th fraction? It's up to the council. You know, Russ, I'd submit that recommendation to Garnett and see if she'd like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting. I guess the general question is opposition to this from council? We have a chance, obviously, we didn't have a workshop last week, so we can discuss the terror, but I'm just curious.
I mean, maybe we should take it to a workshop or, I mean, whatever the proper steps are. I mean, there is, I think, I think many of us are in support and are looking for common ground. But we also want to be sensitive to the township and that's our tri-community partner. So we've talked to our attorneys. So it's just, I think it's, I think, to your point, we can find common ground for where everyone can align. But we do have a few sort of municipal responsibilities that we have to cover. It's my understanding.
Thank you. Great. Thank you to the guest speakers for coming tonight. And I think we've reached the point where we have reached public comment on agenda items only. If anyone has something they would like to comment on, please limit it to something that is currently on the agenda and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Any, please, John.
I can hardly hear people with their masks, so allow me to do that. I'm freezing, too. It's good to be back in this room. I think it's been two years since I've been here. And Ross, we haven't met, but nice to meet you across the table there. So I'm John Helmrich. I live at 352264th Street in Sagatuck Township. I've been a township resident for 19 years. And most of you know, I've been quite active in tri-community affairs and local government. I want the city council to know that the township is considered one of the official consulting parties in the, to the Army Corps of Engineers relative to the permit reviews for the land north of the Kalamazoo River Mouth. As such, the township has twice provided written letters to the Corps supporting. supporting a careful and thorough review of the matter, taking into account the designation by the federal government of a traditional cultural party of the area for the various tribal nations. I've also been on lengthy Zoom calls with the Corps and other consulting parties where I have urged the careful and thorough review, giving due consideration of all the various interests involved. As the city, you, owns the property due south of the property in question across the Kalamazoo River, including the very popular summer boating area known as the Cove, I would think that the city might have concerns regarding the impacts to the public interest, including water and boating safety, to share with the Corps. I've been a strong supporter all this time of the vital tri-community master plan, which clearly states, "Public acquisition of the Dennison property on both sides of the Kalamazoo River is the top priority for the tri-communities." The city achieved half of this goal for the tri-community. Thank you for that. And the city remains an interested party in what the Army Corps may decide in the future for the remainder of the property. I thank you for including this matter on your agenda tonight and hope you will give it more thorough consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dan Fox, please.
Do the same thing. Dan Fox, City Sagatuck. This is actually on the agenda, I assume, because my letter with my name on it is on the agenda under 14B or something like that. And it relates to the extended outdoor dining on taxpayer property point or consideration, whatever. And I just want to encapsulate the letter, because I'm, the letter appeared on pages 127 and 128 of 128-page packet. So I fully within my understanding, if you didn't hang on every word on those last two pages in your packet. The point of the letter was simply to say that whenever it is and however it is decided what the fees will be for the use of that taxpayer property in front of these businesses, that somehow, some way, and I don't, I'm not a financial guy enough to know how to do this, but somehow, some way, there should be a link between what's charged and what that taxpayer property that's being used is worth. Certainly not a dollar for dollar, what are they going to make off of it? But it shouldn't, I think it's, I think it'd be a crying shame to have it be just delivered for next to nothing. So, and, which wasn't the, I mean, we're in an emergency situation when this whole thing developed, and you could make the argument in that case, next to nothing was fine because it was a do or die situation. We are no longer in a do or die situation. So that's all, that was my only point. The other thing is, I may have misunderstood, my understanding on the reports, fire district meeting reports or whatever, that you guys were taking over that function in the city. So, and when I saw the, you know, whatever it is, the 35 pages of the fire district's statistics and whatever, I assumed that was going to be addressed, however, within the staff or presentation. I'm perfectly happy, perfectly happy to do that again. But as it was served up to me in a phone call, that was not how it was going to be done from this point forward. So separate item, not a big deal, but if some clarity on that would be a help. Thank you.
That concludes in the building, public comment. Do we have anybody online that would like to make a public comment? Any hands raised? Okay. Then we can move on to, well, we have no new ordinances. No public hearings, no unfinished business. Takes us to item 12, new business. Sagatuck Historical Markers Project. I believe we have a representative from the, the group Eric on?
We do.
Eric, over to you.
Hello. Thank you for having me here. I'm glad we've got the technical issues sorted to be able to make this happen. I'm joining you tonight after our postponed workshop of last week to share with you and answer questions you may have on the project the History Center is planning, History Lives Here: Historical Markers in Sagatuck and Douglas. The History Center is planning to, is planning for historical markers in Sagatuck City Parks. When we met back in October at the workshop with the council, we had support to move forward with our planning. And we come back before you this, tonight, for approval of the four final sites and the agreement between the History Center and the city of Sagatuck. So I know that we included quite a bit of information that's in the packet from the workshop and for today's meeting. Would you like me to go through sort of the details of that? Or would you like me to just sort of speak generally to that and answer questions you may have?
I think, Eric, what we'll do is we'll see if there's a motion and then see if there's any council questions once we have a motion on the table, if that sounds good.
And staff has, staff has presented a recommended motion. We actually have two. I'll just recommend, I'll just wrap these up into one and recommend them to council. So the recommended motion would be to approve the proposed locations as submitted of the historical markers within the parks of the city of Sagatuck and to approve the letter of agreement between the city of Sagatuck and Sagatuck Douglas History Center as submitted.
Motion by Garner, second by Stanton. Discussion. Go ahead, Russ.
Hi, Eric. Great job. Appreciate you following up. It's kind of strange. Appreciate you following up on every item that the council asked for at the workshop. And I'm impressed by the detail that you presented to council, a full supportive of this. I also, when I was looking at this, I was just thinking about the Mount Ballhead project as well, and I could see some parallels here to what we're trying to do. So further discussions about this, as Mount Ballhead project continues. But again, good work. I really appreciate what you have done with this.
Any other council questions, comments?
Go ahead. Hello, Eric. Earlier today, I sent an email to Bill Hess and copied Eric on it. I mean, I'm in full support. I think it's a wonderful project. Maybe a little minor issue, but I'm not real happy about the location in Cook Park. It appears to me like it's kind of right in the middle of the park as opposed to either closer to one end or the other. Cook Park's a pretty active open space. If you spend time down there in the summer, a lot of, a lot of family things going on, frisbees, chasing balls, chasing dogs, kids playing football, family touch football games and stuff. And just to say that the art fair is not going to resume down there. I didn't know it was going to be forever, you know, change venue. I thought it was actually coming back. But anyways, it's a minor thing, but I could see it closer to City Hall on the same side of the sidewalk, maybe up on that bluff or something like that, because it's kind of a rise going up there. It's up to council. I just think it's kind of right in the middle of things there. Could, you know, cause some issues.
Mark, I'm glad you brought that up because I think it's the same thing when I was looking at this. So thanks for reminding me. I would agree that it would probably be better served. The only question I would have about up at the top of the sidewalk, and I don't know how often anybody has come through that curb and not made it, but it then becomes a, it could, I don't know if cars ever gone through there, but I'm almost thinking because it is specific to the pavilion, is why not think about putting it more towards the northwest corner of the lot, near where the pavilion was?
I think one of the comments that they made to me was accessibility by sidewalk. And so they wanted by a sidewalk. Eric can certainly speak for himself. They think there'll be more foots. The more foot traffic, the more they feel it will, you know, be viewed. So.
But I agree.
The other, and in conjunction with that, the question I got, Eric, is how portable are these? I mean, are these something that can be easily moved? Or are they like, once they're in there, you almost have to get a, an excavator to get them out?
Right, yeah. So let me speak to a couple of the, a couple of relevant points. They will be, they will be permanent, permanently installed. So there'll be a concrete pad that will be poured, and then the steel structures will be bolted to that. So they can be, they can be relocated, you know, if at some point in the future that's necessary, whether it's for need of repair or some issue, the better placement, the need to relocate them. That can happen, but it would necessitate, you know, pouring a new concrete pad and moving them, moving the structure to that, to that site. As far as the sighting, I was talking about the Cook Park marker. We did spend, the thoughtfulness of the site selection really started back in the, in the late summer and early fall. And we spent time sort of our own preliminary survey of potential sites and locations for them in parks where there would be, where there'd be, you know, get a lot of, a lot of viewership and a lot of visibility, as well as being able to tell a clear story that really celebrates historic resources, the intrinsic qualities of the history of the area and culture of the area. And then in October, we had a meeting onsite with all of our team from the History Center, along with the Department of Public Works. And that was really, really significant of having Scott Herbert in his team there as well. And there were a number of considerations from our initial thoughts that once we talked to the DPW team, you know, things like, you know, mower radius and the location of sprinkler lines and utilities of other vegetation and trees and sort of longer-term planning for the parks. So at that point in October, we made quite a few adjustments based on input from Scott and DPW of kind of thinking about where's the best placement for these for visitors and for telling a great story about the history of the community? And how do we make sure that they're well cared for and they're not interfering, creating more work, creating problems in our parks? For the Cook Park sign, we settled on the site that's in the packet, that's sort of halfway between the waterfront and Water Street, because it afforded really compelling views of where the waterfront activity had been historically and a view of the big pavilion and the Coral Gables building, for one. For two, it seemed like a good, happy medium location between the very busy and congested and already kind of overwhelming sensory overwhelm of Water Street, where you have cars parked along the street, where you have a very busy, narrow sidewalk, and a hill as well, the slope that then curves down, heading towards the, heading towards the water. And so that area, a number of other signs up there already, as well as cars, traffic, and a lot of pedestrians. It made sense to situate the sign in a bit further away from that in the area that there would be some clear, some space around it and less interference. We did consider placing the marker closer to the waterfront, closer to the sidewalk, boardwalk along the Kalamazoo River. And that would, you know, that would be a possibility. I think in the discussions, DPW felt that it would be sort of best, kind of best placed in the location that we have, that we settled on, that we put into the packet.
I don't know if we still have Scott Herbert on the line or not. It'd be interesting to know if Scott had any feedback on DPW's view on the current locations as proposed and how that will work with their activities. We may have lost Scott, though.
Scott goes to bed at eight.
Yeah, Scott's gone. All right, well then, any further discussion from council? I believe we do.
I still have a concern because it's right in the middle of the park. And it just, you know, that kind of does take up usable space when you have, you know, an open park that's really primary purposes for recre, not primary, but a big part of it's recreation. I would prefer it closer to the waterfront than, than it's not, you know, right in the middle of an open area of the park that just, anything that happens, that kids running, motion, or anything else, everyone's got to run around it, you know? So that's just my own, that's my own.
Yeah.
I don't feel, I think it's a great, great thing. I'm saying this with tremendous amount of respect for the people that have put this project together and spent so many, you know, so much time. But I, you know, trying to look at all, you know, all angles and not just from a historical interpretation standpoint.
No, it's a fair point. Eric, roughly how far would you guess it is from the sidewalk that heads down toward the waterfront?
How, how far is the marker, the proposed marker from, from the sidewalk that you approached?
It's a few feet from the sidewalk that, okay.
That's correct, yeah. Correct.
So, Mark, were you thinking you would like to see it more towards the boardwalk, sidewalk, where the boardwalk and sidewalk come together?
You know, I'm open to any place other than in the middle of the park where it's at, you know? Either one way or the other, I could even utilize it. Closer to the, closer to Jones Park up on that, that corner, too. There is a historical interpretative sign there, I think, that's part of the county. I don't know what the long-term plan is that. I don't know if anybody takes care of that. I don't know if anybody read that one. It's a pretty interesting, it's a nice display when it was put up there, but I don't think anything's been done with it for 15 years.
It's interesting how we can have different sort of views on this because my concern was having some markers very close to the waterfront potentially would detract from people's views when they just want to come and sit and enjoy the view. So there's another side that I can see as well.
Probably more people walk along the boardwalk than walk along that sidewalk, of course, in the summer.
Indeed.
There's somebody who is looking for an interpretation or historical, local history lesson.
It could be up closer to the information booth.
I think, I think one of the concerns we had about that placement is that with an eye towards a future marker project, another marker that might go towards that, there's a potential to have in a, in a future year, a marker that would go near that county marker that you're talking about, where the interurban, Dill's Interurban Station is, where the information booth is today. So with this marker, we're really telling the story of the big pavilion and steamship tourism coming to Sagatuck in the first half of the 20th century. And really makes sense to be in a position where you can see the site of where the old pavilion was and closer towards the waterfront than you would get from the, the information booth site today. So that was, that was one of the factors behind the site for that marker in Cook Park.
I agree, Eric. It's very thoughtful. I appreciate the effort your group has put in, but I share Councilman Becken's concerns, too, about being in that park. And I'm sure we all know how that park's used, people spread out, and it could very well be an obstacle for people and so forth. Was there any discussion maybe putting it on the other side of the sidewalk, closer to the tree? Or is that going to be disruptive with the tree or any other public works concerns? Because that way, there's already, obviously, there's a tree there. So people are, you know what I'm saying?
Are you talking about on the south side of the sidewalk?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, I think, again, the focus there was having viewers looking towards, looking to the north, looking to the north and west, towards the river and towards... Having viewers looking towards uh, looking to the north, looking to the north and west, towards the river and towards the site of the big pavilion. Uh and towards the Coral Gables, which is a really iconic landmark to help orient viewers to where the big pavilion was. So that uh that was some of the factors around that.
Okay, well, I think we've had a pretty robust discussion, but we, obviously, we can't put concrete in the ground until the spring, right?
I would think Eric, this project slated for the spring, yeah?
That's correct.
Well.
So could, I, could council be just give approval to the concept and then discuss the location of the?
That's the only, the only issue uh I I I've got, I, in my own mind, I even have a couple of other alternative sites. Said that I don't know have been even thought, one might be at the foot of uh uh Mason Street. Uh between the Coral Gables and the Butler, which there's, I mean, that's right next to where the big pavilion was. There's still foundation left of the big pavilion there, and that's pretty close, you know, that could be close to that boardwalk. And that area is a mess down there, that could use something like that to clean it up.
Well, ge- given that we have some time.
Yeah, I'm just looking at some.
I I think we have a couple of options.
Sure.
Uh we could, what what the council could, you could pull your motion. Or we could vote on the motion with some adjustments and and revisit location of these things if we want to approve the concept. But maybe it's simpler to either pull the motion, vote the motion, whichever way you want to vote the motion. And then pick this back up again at a, at a workshop. Any thoughts?
I would ask, Eric, if we were to discuss the Cook Park location a little bit more detail, what would you get from council this evening to feel comfortable about? I think we've got a, it seems to me like we've got consensus that this is a great project and we'd like to move forward with the Cook Park. Location being one area of discussion.
So it would be, I I guess I would, I would ask for uh some, some sense of the, of process. Of what we should bring to you for other potential sites. Uh you know, acknowledging that we've uh presented sites and reviewed sites uh with staff. Uh what, what, what is the process to sort of lay out alternative sites for Cook Park specifically? It sounds like that is the, the area of concern. Uh what, what would you like from us to to prepare or to work with you uh to sort of resolve that question?
Well, for me personally, now that I've seen this information, I want to go physically walk it and take a look at some of the different options and then come back with a, with a. With a position for myself personally, and I think that could be done, you know, pretty quickly for my, for me. I'm assuming other council members want to do the same, it's, it's great to get out there and actually stand there and look where the proposed spots are going to be.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Russ, I I mean, I was out there with the guys when they did this and I gave them some feedback at the time. You know, it's funny, the the one that I have more concern about is the one in Wicks Park being too close to the water. But, you know, there's pros and cons to all these locations and and I'm, I'm okay with moving forward. But I think, given that we have the luxury of time on this one, you know, we can't put concrete in the ground until spring anyway. Um you know, we are, we, I think it it would be useful to all the members of the council to actually see the difference of elevations. And to actually stand there at these various locations, because on one hand, you may, you may accomplish one objective. And on the other hand, you may take away from another objective. The other piece that's missing is DPW's feedback, uh they gave a lot of feedback to these locations based on things like utilities and maintenance activities. So, I mean, I think we're all, I I I sense that the council is in favor of these markers going up, there's, I don't think there's any doubt there. Um I think the question is, do we need to give the council a bit more time to look at placement? But once again, I want to, I I don't want to feel like we're continuing to um, you know, take a lot of the History Center's time as well. Coming back and back and back with more proposals, so.
I personally feel comfortable saying at our next workshop, we would make a, give feedback on the potential location for the Cook Park one. I didn't, I didn't have any issues with the other three locations, I just know the lead time on these signs, I I think Eric probably wants some assurance that they can go ahead and get these signs. Underway.
Ordered in that type of stuff, absolutely.
Yeah, so we're absolutely.
Still do the motion with the letter of agreement between the city of Sagatuck and go with that and then table the.
Location.
New locations for Cook for the next workshop.
Yeah, yeah, Eric, is that helpful? I mean, it sounds like council's in total support, so I think whatever action they take tonight, you can go ahead and order the signage. Uh and get that underway.
Um, okay.
I don't know if it'd be helpful for, maybe like de- delegate two council members, like maybe Mark and Russ to review it with the Historical Society. Since they have ideas.
Absolutely.
Uh that sounds great, I mean, I I I was there with the guys and I gave them some feedback, some of it's been incorporated. And like I said, y- your view on Cook Park is, you know, activities in the park mine is people trying to, once again, en- enjoy the natural riverscape. So there's, it's a push and pull, you know, you're gonna lose something either way.
Right, yeah.
But we are supportive and so do we need to amend uh Russ's motion?
You you can do it either way, the probably the cleanest way is just to vote this one down.
Okay.
And then make a new motion with just the agreement, so you have a motion on the floor which included both the locations and the agreement. Um, okay, I would call roll.
All right.
Vote it down and then make a new motion, that's.
All right, would the uh, would the clerk please call the roll on this one?
The word saying no.
Correct.
No.
Leo? No.
Yeah.
No.
No. So now can we, can we make a new motion?
I make a motion to approve the letter of agreement between the city of Sagatuck and Sagatuck Douglas History Center as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
I guess, yes, I don't know what that does to location, but.
Well.
It takes out the agree, the uh location part of it, this is just even.
Yes.
Yes.
Leo? Yes.
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 So no motion regarding the next part of it until we come back after Mark and I've had a chance to do some volunteering.
I think we'll put it on the workshop agenda then, okay.
And you guys will loop back with Scott.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's a, yeah, he's a key factor.
And Eric.
Fantastic work, Eric.
Eric, Eric, sorry for the, for the pain on this.
Thanks.
But thank you for your patience.
Eric, thank you so much for following our feedback, I think you guys did an amazing job um. In in bringing that information back to us in a really graphic way that was easy to understand, really well done, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric, thanks for your patience. Okay, on to um new business item B, resolution number twenty, twenty-two hundred, geez, one ten dash A dash twenty twenty-two. City council meeting dates.
I make a motion to approve the city council scheduling meetings for the year twenty twenty-two.
Second, Leo.
Okay, any discussion? City manager, anything you'd like to share on this?
Nothing.
Nothing. I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
That was impressive.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Go ahead, Russ.
The only comment I would make is that it would be great to put this calendar as a, just a quick reference for people. I know that all of these dates are put into the individual planning and so forth, but this is a great thing, just, I mean, I, I'm gonna pull this thing out. Because it's just helpful, so if we could find a spot on the website, just to make it easier for public to find one general calendar.
Hang it on your refrigerator.
Well, maybe, maybe do that, Mark.
Have a graphic of a refrigerator on our website.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Maybe the city needs to make a refrigerator magnet, so.
It's a quick reference for.
All right.
Uh, yeah, thanks to Jamie for putting the calendar.
Yes, excellent work, Jamie, thank you. So that takes us to new business item number C, meeting rules and procedural amendment, anything you want to share?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Great, um, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Yeah, go ahead, Hal.
Motion to approve the amendment to the city, is this city council rules and procedures?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, for meetings originally adopted on July twenty-third, two thousand and seven.
Second.
All right, we have motion by Leo, second by Stanton, this one is a, is a uh voice vote?
It is.
Go ahead, would the clerk please call roll or voice vote?
Call, yeah, call for the, call for the vote.
Oh, I, I can call for voice vote, okay, all right. All in favor, say yay.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
All, both say. Motion carries. All right, item D, cemetery service agreement. Anything you'd like to share with this one, Mr. Manager?
The uh cover page is on page ninety-seven of one hundred and twenty-eight of your packet. This is just an extension of the, the old agreement and what it, what it does, it provides the same services as if you lived in the township. So you get the same rates for, for burials.
And it looks like we're gonna be on a two-year calendar now.
Correct.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the cemetery service agreement between the city of Sagatuck and Sagatuck Township as presented.
Second, Leo.
Motion by Stanton, second by Leo, uh any discussion?
Quick clarification, Ryan, um, we're currently on annual contract with.
That's, that's what.
Two years, so that's why, that's why we have the escalator in there.
Correct, yep, it's been a while since we knew that, so.
And so we owe him the fifty-eight thirty-three for twenty twenty-one.
That's correct, right, Peter, we haven't paid out yet this year?
Okay. The agreement was supposed to be approved last spring, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I write down too.
Okay. But did we pay him?
No.
For the year twenty twenty-one? He uh, I will, I don't know how that's gonna sit with them. We didn't pay for it.
Yeah, so those are some of the que- I mean, I've got a few questions on this. Um, so it was clear from this report that we had not paid twenty twenty-one, my question was, do they bill us or do we? So no bill. So no bill, so essentially, we got a free year.
Not necessarily, because when the agreement expires, residents pay ten times the amount.
Yeah, they would have paid.
They go, they pay two thousand instead of two hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, so.
Well, yeah, I don't know if that's, in theory, has there been people?
Absolutely, there has been one family that, because of need, not this year, I don't believe that happened this year, but prior.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I spoke with um the township about that, because, because the family reached out. It wasn't the family, there was somebody that was looking to buy a plot that was affected, so yes, so basically.
Well, I guess that's something that manager to manager can work out.
Right, we need to get it.
You know, and and it's almost a little embarrassing that we couldn't stay on that, but that simple issue. Yeah, I know we tried to force it from a council, it's just, well, just a lot of things going on.
Well, and you are, you know, conversations with the town.
Yeah, I guess you got, can you, can you get clarification on that question?
Sure, whether we owe money for.
Yeah, yeah, and if we do pay it, we then ask them to refund those people a different.
So, one of my questions was, number one is alignment on the payment, Peter. In my, in my opinion, if this is from July to June of each year, we should be paying on June and July of each year as opposed to paying in March. For instance, because the payment doesn't align with the actual agreement with the township, that's my first comment too is. Back to what was just asked, is that assume the two-ten twenty-two payment is for the period seven-one twenty-one to six-thirty twenty-two, it sounds like that's not a safe assumption.
Does it have dates in this contract?
Go ahead.
So that would be a question, and then the two twenty-two twenty-three payment would be for the period seven-one twenty-two to six-thirty twenty-three.
Well, the twenty-two payment, they want here on March twenty-two, it tells us July first.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one from June thirtieth to twenty-two, the next payment in this agreement would be July first. Twenty-two through two.
Right, but paid in February of twenty-three.
Correct.
So that's my point, is I think it would be behooves to put that payment in alignment with the agreement. So in other words, our payments due when the agreement removes on seven-one, so that means after this. Seven-one and twenty-two, we'd be paying the seven-one. Just cleaner, in my opinion.
I mean, that's.
It it just seems kind of wonky the way it's set up. No, 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 I'm not, I'm just saying that.
You know, it expired, I think the last one expired March thirty-first was twenty-one.
Yeah, that's what it said in the.
So you're saying that if we even approved that on July first, we couldn't have paid it, because it was outside the, outside that fiscal year.
And I, I don't think, I don't think that was the case this year, I don't think it affected a family, this year it affected a family. Right, there was one family affected, I think two years ago. But, you know, both uh the township and Sagatuck had new managers, new. And positions, so I think if we're moving to two years, that's helpful. And obviously, I know you all have had some back and forth on this issue, so I think we are cleaning this up.
So, we feel good that we are on a good path forward now, Russ, any further questions?
Well, the only, again, back to the payment issue, it would make sense to have the agreement aligned with the payments. Whether you make the term of this agreement match the payment date of two-ten twenty-two and then two-ten twenty-three. Or you change the payment date, whichever way, because that, to me, that just, it just makes more sense.
So the proposed payment on February tenth, twenty twenty-two is for the.
Seven-one.
Twenty-one twenty-two term, so you could just go ahead and say, when are we gonna pay next year's?
Yeah, and I was just suggesting making July of this year for the following year.
Well, it sounds to me like they gotta work out that. There's still some cloudy.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think this is getting figured out.
Yeah. Yeah, send them a check. Work on the details.
So as far as the resolution goes, we don't need to change.
No.
Dates, we can.
There is no date on it.
Tell my wife not to go out by that cemetery.
On the motion.
The other question I had was around the escalator, um, there did not seem to be a consistent percentage in the escalation from year to year. So one year was six percent or five percent, the other year was four percent, so do we know any?
I was told that this, these new numbers were not based on uh population, that it was just a CPI adjustment. But to Russ's point, I don't think that aligns, it doesn't, no.
Well, how do you want to handle this, Ryan, so we can?
Yeah, um, I, you know, I would just.
Clearing some.
I mean, the dollar amount is not, we just have to make sense of it and get an explanation. So I would, you know, I would just recommend a motion to approve this and allow the city manager to work out the dates for clean, cleaner payment. To the extent possible, unless there's something that, to Peter's point, with the millage and that they can't take the. All right, so the two issues, explain, be able to explain the, the escalator and to the extent possible, clean up the dates for payment, yeah.
So you're, you're clear on council's direction on this and, you know, we do want, we do want to approve this, I, I think. So are we ready to, yeah, we have a motion and we have a second, so I think are we?
You got the, you got that, Jamie, what we're talking.
Yeah, be able to explain that to council.
You guys are good, okay, I think with that, we're ready for a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, motion carries unanimously, uh item E, the Butler easement agreement.
Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd love to, thank you. Uh, page one oh one of your packet. Um, so the planning commission re- reviewed the um outdoor patio for the. So the planning commission reviewed the outdoor patio for the Butler, and staff had recommended that we establish an easement for the boardwalk. The only instrument that currently allows for public access is the street end license agreement that the city has with the Butler. The license could end at any, any point in time, and theoretically, public access could go, go away. We, we'd probably get into a whole nother discussion about prescriptive rights and how long the public has had access to the boardwalk, and that would be a whole, another, another thing. But since this project went in front of planning commission, we thought it was a good opportunity, staff did to, and recommended to plan commission to, to kind of clean up the, the easement agreement. And kind of solidify to the extent possible, the public's right to, to the boardwalk. And I recommend city council and planning commission do this as each project comes in front of, uh, city of Sagatuck, no matter where, where it's at, if the, the public has a, a use currently. So, uh, planning commission made this a condition of their approval, that the easement agreement be entered into. Their legal council worked with our legal council to, to work out the details. And I will mention that this does have some new indemnification language. Uh, it's very, very narrow, and this is part of the reason why we're bringing this in front of council. This language didn't exist with the street end lease agreement, but it's very specific to, um, if the city of Sagatuck does something weird on the boardwalk and it causes harm. Then we'd be like. We would indemnify the, the Butler group. So it's very, very narrow, because we're not doing any work out there. It's, it's their responsibility to maintain that boardwalk. Um, I should also mention that this whole agreement needs to be renegotiated, uh, when the Cook Park license agreement expires, which is on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. But we've done a lot of legwork, we kind of under, you know, we reviewed a lot of documents, so we understand, uh, these agreements and these, these leases, and. It wasn't very confusing when we first started this process, but now we're in a much, much better place. Um, and so this is part of the, the, the approval for, they cannot get their building permit until, uh, the city of Sagatuck approves this, uh, this easement.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So you're seeing this is holding up their issue? That was.
This is one of, this is one of the items that they need to, to have completed, to get their building permit correct.
And this would, uh, this would be up for negotiation again with Cook Park. So in essence, this is just gonna be good, this is gonna be in place for about ten months.
Yep, it's a stopgap.
We, we still have the leverage, because we control the frontage of, uh, Cook Park. The street ends. Yeah, they get half of each one, half of Butler and Mason, which are pretty critical to their, their yacht club and boat, boaty, you know, because about. Thirteen slips down here. Thirteen to fifteen, something like that, producing significant, can't take the guts out of their, you know, yacht club operation.
Yeah, that, the, yeah, the primary concern has been not just with the recent planning commission decision, but just, I think overall, that is major. Access and public access to that boardwalk is absolutely essential. There's no, it's black and white.
Yeah, even though this agreement is only dealing with one section of the entire boardwalk.
Yeah.
Basically, from Wick's Park, I mean, for, I don't know if these parcels include Cook Park or not. I'm assuming they don't.
They, I don't.
Because it only talks about property, they, only the parcels they own from. Cook Park to the Butler Street.
Do we want a motion to discuss this further? Do we want?
Since, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But just kind of coming into my thought process. Uh, it was put in there, not at their request, but at the planning commission's recommendation. So we're pretty much obligated to follow up on this, as, as long as we're not, you know, I think eliminating our, you know, the, the, the future use of the, of the boardwalk. And that it's going to be more dovetailed in with the Cook Park agreement somehow.
Yeah.
So you do that, and I assume when you dovetail Cook Park in, you'll, you'll continue the rest of the Butler property, too.
Correct.
So at least then, we have an agreement, should have agreement solidified from Mason Street to Butler Street, including the Cook Park, which probably, if that's the end.
All right, we still don't have a motion. We still don't have a motion. We have a motion?
Is this what the planning commission is recommending?
Yes.
Yeah, it's part of their condition.
It's part of the, it's part of the approval.
Yeah.
So I guess we better approve it, because we might end up with bigger problems if we don't.
I make a motion to approve the boardwalk easement agreement between city of Sagatuck grantee and Butler Place Property LLC grant for.
House support.
All right, so we have a motion by Gardner, second by Becken. Now do we have some additional discussion?
Yeah, the only discussion I would have were just more of an observation as to what Councilman Becken just mentioned, is I think there's an opportunity here, especially with some new owners who seem to be, you know, willing to work with us that. We can make, you know, we can make it, uh, make an effort to make sure that this remains open and accessible to the, the public for. Absolutely essential, just.
I think, I think we're all in violent agreement that, uh, public access to the waterfront is, is critical, and that's something the council takes extremely seriously, so. Any other observations, thoughts, comments? Would the clerk, would the clerk please, uh, call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Leo. Stan. Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Onto item F, budget adjustment. Do you want to take this, or does Peter want to?
Yeah.
On this one?
Um, well, we'll tag him, Peter, just let me, let me lead in. Budget adjustments, I would imagine the city of Sagatuck has probably done a budget adjustment every year. Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, so.
Yeah.
This is not out of the ordinary by any means. Peter, as you, as you kind of walk, walk through these line items, if you could just explain a little bit about, um, some of the.
Yeah.
Like, the, the G, the general ledger number, the description, what does DR mean, and what does CR mean, and we can, we can walk through these, these items.
So everybody has in front of them the. Budget adjustment. The first we're going to talk about is the general fund. And it, we'll, we'll go through the revenues first, so the penalties and interest, this is all based on property taxes, the admin fees also, note, that's increased revenue. Compared to the original budget that we approved what, June, last June. So it's an increased revenue of five hundred bucks for penalty and interest, another nine thousand dollars in the administration fees. The permit fees, that's basically zoning fees that we've collected, um, it's another increase of ten thousand dollars. And basically, the majority of that permit fees is coming from. The short-term rentals that the new project managers worked out when she was the intern of bringing us up to speed, so there's a lot of, and then a lot of them, they're on a three-year cycle, so they've hit pretty heavy this year. And then also, we get back ten percent of all the building permit fees, and there's been, as people know, in the last eighteen months, there's been a lot of new construction or new remodel jobs, so that's the other increase. Um, and then the next line number, it says other federal grants, this is fifty thousand dollars, this is from the, the federal government, this is half of our, we, we rewarded just a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars, they've given us the first half. So we got the first fifty thousand dollars back, I think it was probably September, October, we received that. Um, the school tax collection, Pete, that's just a house clipping of a one-dollar increase, that's basically. The Sagatuck Public Schools slash Ottawa area, I'd admit, Ottawa area ISD, we collect half the ISD's monies in this, on the summer bills, and they pay us two dollars and seventy-five cents a parcel to collect that. The next is the parking lot revenue fees increase, seventy-five hundred dollars, that's based on, because we increased the fees from five dollars to a ten-dollar collection like in June. So that was increased revenues there. Then the chain ferry fees, there hasn't been any revenue in the last three years, so this ninety-six hundred dollars is Mr. Steele met with Ryan and myself, and I think the mayor was here. And that ten, ninety-six hundred dollars covers the nineteen season, the twenty season, and the twenty-one season. So he started out with a base of about three grand, and I think there was a, was it a seven percent increase that he gave for the next two years? We, we squared up with the, what, here just a couple of months ago. And then the Oval concession, that's, I've increased the revenue by forty grand, we did, you know, because of COVID, our concession did quite well last season, so hopefully, we carry that through the next six weeks of this, starting Memorial Day. The boat ramp fees, you know, we didn't have anything in the budget, because the boat ramp was shut down the year before, so. We collected basically from July first through the end of the season of October, we collected about a thousand bucks. The forty thousand dollar increase miscellaneous donation and income is a multiple thing, it's where we build all the collections for the mill foil that was, that the pri, the private citizens or property owners paid. Um, and then we got some, the Cow Hill gave us money towards the Christmas lights, the CBB gave us money towards the Christmas lights. And then there were some refunds and dividends that we got back from the Michigan Municipal League's workers' comp and liability insurance carrier. Now, those were all increased revenues in the general fund based on the original budget. And then when now, we have increased expenses from the original budget. The first one is in the council, the legal fees, we, we've increased the expense of seventy-five thousand dollars, um, you guys have know the litigation, basically, it's going on, and, and a new law firm that was brought on here this summer. Education and training, it increased to fifteen hundred dollars, the council, you know, we brought in, we just had here a month ago with, um, Maryland. The dues and public, that's just an increase, you know, a hundred and thirteen dollar increase, the audit, twenty-five bucks increase. And then the next one is in the city clerk administration, this thirty thousand dollar increase in wages and another ten grand. Basically, that's, um, appropriating money for the new, um, project coordinator position. That we've, we didn't have it in the budget to start with, so we've been, we hired, um, that coordinator, then we basically had for six months worth of wages and benefits that will carry us to the rest of the fiscal year. The contractual services is basically some upgrading in the website and some ongoing calendars and different software that we purchased here. Um, then there's legal fees and the clerk's thing, we had some issues, and another five thousand dollar increase in legal fees, you know, we have, we, we had some FOIA questions that the new law firm had to take on. The next sixteen hundred dollars is the assessor, now we have a new assessor that started in the first of July, and that, we, they now have a new software and a. An iPod tablet, that they can go out and take pictures with, with the software built, and it goes right into the server, into the parcel. Before, when they had to come back, they had to spend time taking a picture, basically, with the digital camera, trying to get it attached to the software. And then the salary and wages in the, at City Hall, basically, it was an increase when we had the intern here this past summer. You know, with the city clerk leaving in midstream, we upped her pay to help with the city clerk duties, we had the city clerk on staff. The three thousand dollar city hall is basically the upgrade in the technology, you know, we had the bits come in, and we still have the TVs that are hopefully, whenever they're delivered from the original budget. Um, contractual services, that twenty thousand dollars, um, that's basically the increase in mill foil is the big thing, the expense there for, for the public properties when we did the second treatment. And we had Scott's got a con, new contractor coming in to remove some street trees here sometime this winter. Holiday lighting, no. Two thousand dollars, we added more lighting that was not in the original budget in Wick's Park. And then keeping the lights on longer, there's gonna be some more expense there in electrical bills. The educational training, we've hired, you know, three new DPW people that, you know, bringing them up to speed with all the rules and CDL policies. Um, the next one, the contractual services, and the one below is legal services, that's in the planning department, that's, you know, basically the legal fees, basically more of the litigation with the zoning board appeals, recent changes. And then there's, uh, some educational training in the plane, that Cindy has signed up, she has quite a few new members that are gonna be going through some MSU extension training here. It's a six-week program, we just signed everybody up for. Um, the capital outlays in the parks there, the thirty-five thousand dollars, that's the agreement you have with landscape design for the kids park, and upgrades in kids park and the basketball courts. And then the re-ticket booth, it says repair and maintenance at Oval Beach, the ticket booth, it's been hit numerous times by large RVs trying to come into the park, and they don't understand, and it overhangs, so we have a contractor now has time to do, basically, to move the whole roof and put a new roof on.
Good lord.
The ticket booth, and hopefully, we're gonna get some of that money back from our liability carrier, we have the police report, um, talked to an insurance agent, what to say and what, what to do to get our liability to carry it. So overall, we've had to train this, the last line item versus transfer to fund balance, that's where, in the current budget, we had, when we approved the budget, there was a large sum of money that we didn't have earmarked at that time. So we're gonna take seventy-five thousand dollars to make this adjustment balance.
That's the net amount between the deficits and the credits, right?
Yes, that's the net amount from the deficit and the credits to get, and it's kind of, in the accounting world, it's kind of the opposite for this budget adjustment, because we're increasing the expenses and increasing the revenue, so. That's what the DNR stands for up on the top, but with a budget adjustment, it's kind of really flip-flop of real, welcome to fund account, it's the opposite. Well, I'll just finish, the next one is the local streets, it's increased, the local road millage is basically, it just, it's on everybody's summer tax bills, increase in, uh, the millages that we collect of six thousand dollars. And then special assessments, the five thousand dollars, that wasn't the original budget, the town, Sagatuck Township, we did Park Street, there, the last, I don't know if it's two hundred yards, a quarter of miles in the township. And then they, um, they paid that all the way to the end out to Oxbow in the township, there's an agreement, they gave us five thousand dollars there, so. Just basically, I increased expenses in the contractual services in the local street fund, so that budget just was balanced. And then the next one is the debt service, basically, that's the road bond millage, um, this is just a housekeeping thing, there was more money collected that was budgeted, so. There's an extra five thousand dollars in revenue with it, that fund there, we're trying to whittle it down, because we only have about seven years left to pay on, and there's money in that fund balance, we just. We just, it's, it, a balancing act to get it to balance with the necessary interest and principal payments and the tax collection, that's just a housekeeping thing. The next fund is a new one, this is the business license fund, now, the new order that you guys adopted, you know, so basically, we really didn't have any, anything expensed for revenue or expenses. So right now, we just basically, we collected about eight hundred dollars for business licenses, and then we also have to pay for the software for the upgrade, so it's, um, a net there, it's, it's an eight hundred dollars for revenue, or it's really not a money maker currently. The next one is the water sewer fund, and the water taps, the new sewer fees were increasing them by three thousand to ten thousand. And the big thing is this hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars increased expense, that's the project you guys approved. Down here on Butler Street, where they put in the new sewer project back in the month of December, that's the, for the contractor and the engineering cause from. So for the water sewer funds. The next, the last one here is the Rose Garden Fund, basically, we're transferring forty-three thousand dollars, um, from the fund balance to help pay for increased costs on the contractual services. Plus, you guys agreed with landscape designs, forty-two thousand dollar, I guess, makeover here in the spring. Um, so there's the budget adjustment there, I don't know if anybody has any questions or particular line items, or.
Ryan, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, I, I think all of these items, besides some of the housekeeping items that are just balancing out the budget. Have been discussed with council, should, there should be no whammies here, happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Should we get a motion on the floor before we discuss, or?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Mark.
Got, uh, make a motion to approve the resolution number two-two-zero-one-one-zero-dash-B, amend the budget of the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two general appropriations, as presented.
Motion by Becken, second by Gardner. Uh, any discussion questions for Peter or Ryan?
Explanation, thank you, Peter.
Okay.
Thanks, Peter.
So this is a six-month?
This is six months, and we're, we'll have, we'll have one at the end of June, I mean. You know, just the thing right now, I think, where everything, with some other projects come up that warrant before the end of June thirtieth to be finished, I mean. Um, it's just, you know, the big one right now is right, the legal fee, so. And I've got a, also, and I don't know if you want to, we want to get that approved, after that, I've got year-to-date numbers, the whole budget, just go through real quick, if anybody has any questions on those.
Good, we ready for a roll call? The clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. We've reached the point of our agenda where.
Okay, do you want me to go through this, the revenue expenditure report that was in the pack or not? I mean, I don't know if anybody had any, it was in the pack, I don't know if anybody has any questions or.
Certainly entertaining any questions from council.
Or anybody else how to get a hold of me.
That's right.
Thanks for offering.
Okay, not a problem.
Good job, Peter.
Thank you.
Very clear, thank you.
With that, I do think we are at public comment. This is open to anything, for public comment, three minutes, please. Anyone here, don't see any hands, anybody rising to make comment? Anyone online that would like to make public comment? Jamie, any hands raised? No? Here's, we have no public comments tonight. Communications.
We have two items, we have the vacancy notice, which, for boards and commissions, which we posted. Jamie, help me out, did we advertise in the commercial record as well? Okay. The other item is the Puppa Pedio letter that Mr. Fox had submitted and he spoke to earlier.
Great. Sixth item fifteen, boards, commissioners, committee reports, periods we have none to discuss. Yeah, if you, if you go some brief synopsis, Dan, if you, if you don't mind, would you like to?
Yeah, if you could use the microphone for the audience.
Please, go ahead.
That was the. So this report's on the twentieth of December, Fire Board Meeting. One of the things that needed to be on the public record, we had the report of the Fire District's auditor for, for looking over Peter's shoulders. And it was a wonderful glowing report, and as he has done in years past, not unlike you just did. Highly complimentary of Peter's work on behalf of the, on behalf of the Fire District. I think we approved a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars in, in invoice payments. Under the fire chief's. Area announced a couple of certi, new certifications for Chris Bernardi and Chris Mantles related to. Fire service instruction and live fire instruction. Those are important because we don't have to pay somebody outside the district to do that. The indemnification agreement relative to the, the development in the township is still being finalized, but. Progress apparently is encouraging, so we were told. We approved fee schedules, so if anybody, I doubt it, but if anybody's listening, the fee schedules are published. On the Fire District website. We approved a water usage agreement, which relates to the ability of the Fire District to draw water from a site in the township in the event of emergency. And the one I, I did want to mention is. Chief brought up and we talked about it at length. Based on the, the tragedy in Waukesha, Wisconsin, the parade tragedy, I think it was before Christmas. Six people dead, including a child. Based on that. And on. The Fire District's community risk reduction, overall mandate or objective, both. There was a move to create a, an ad hoc committee to look at that issue as it relates to Sagatuck Douglas, least of all to the township, because there aren't a lot of parades out there. And that group has met once. But the group include, included the Fire Chief Greg Janik, it included Steve Kent, Police Chief and Douglas. And included representatives of the, of the sheriff's office, so it's in some sort of way, weird way, it's sort of a try. Community look at what this means for us trying to avoid. Recriminations that could come later along the lines of you should have known. And, you know, as, as, I'm involved in writing up that report and one of the, you know, one of the things. Somebody said is, you know, and I grew up in the fifties, that sort of threat. Was literally inconceivable. No one would have ever, it would never have occurred to anybody to even. Be able to find someplace to read about it. And here now it becomes real, threats change, and so the preparations related to them need to change as well, so. And that's it, that's pretty well it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. All right, we've reached the point where we can take council comments, we'll just go. Around marketing.
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Ali?
None at this time, thank you.
Russ?
Are you guys ready for planning commission report?
Yes.
All right, so just real quickly, I was going to have you do a quiz, but I think everybody's brains is, are probably a little soft. So we'll do it at the workshop on the nineteenth, it was very, actually, if Cindy's still on the call, I'm not sure if she's there, Dan's here, but Dan's our planning commission chair. We have a little quiz, which had us go through and we had to decide who does what, who's responsible for what in terms of zoning and planning and so forth. Found very helpful, I, I didn't score as high as I thought it would, so it was a learning experience for me, but anyway, I'll, I'll have council do that, it was very informative. But I do want to just give commendations to the city staff, we had a, a planning commission strategy meeting on Saturday. And in preparation for that, the city staff has put together this free ring binder, which has our master plan, has all of our zoning ordinances. And other useful information, I think it's a great way to welcome Anne and Rich, our two new planning commissioners. City council should be very proud of that group, they're, they're very enthusiastic and we have a really good, I think we're starting to coalesce and, and I think it's going to really be a good group. And as part of that discussion. We're going to be looking at twenty, two thousand twenty two and twenty three goals for the planning commission, we have four goals that we've identified. We will be coming back to council with a specific recommendation on this, once we actually have a chance to adopt these formally at our next meeting. One is to work on continued improvement of our zoning code, goal number two is master plan development slash twenty twenty six review. The tri community plan requires that we review the master plan every ten years, that's coming up in twenty twenty six. Three is to increase citizen participation in the planning process, and the fourth goal. Is to. Planning commissioner and others' education and training opportunities, and it was alluded to by Peter, that there's a six week course that's offered through Michigan State University. That all of the current planning commissioners, including Daniel, has been to it before, he's going to go back for a refresher course. To increase our understanding and knowledge regarding planning. It's about two hundred and twenty five dollars a piece, well worth the time, and we'd like to encourage council members, anybody else that's interested in making that investment. So that's just one example of where we're going to continue to find ways in which to increase our knowledge. So look for more information, those are just goals, they're going to be specific smart goals under each, under each one of those that the planning commission will bring and to the council. What I'd like to challenge council to do, though, is as a policymaking body, is think about some things that you'd like to see the planning commission do from a policy standpoint. So give us some thought, talk further about that on the nineteenth, but would look for council to give us some further direction. We have some ideas, but we encourage others to.
Very good.
Then, for just general comment, I'd like to bring up. Traditionally, except for last year, we have normally turned off Bald Head Star after about the first week of January. We're there, so I'd like to recommend that we disconnect the star here shortly.
Great, thank you, Russ, for that.
Council okay with that?
Keep it on last year, as long as we keep the streetlights on or not.
You know, we did it longer, we did it longer than normal, I believe, just because of COVID. Maybe coordinate, Scott, is Scott taking the tree down yet?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't think so.
The tree's down?
It's, a tree is still up.
The tree's still up.
So I'll coordinate with Scott. The Al, the Alzett turned it on and asked if they could have.
Why don't we coordinate, coordinate, let's coordinate with Scott, then we can organize like, you know, an expedition and some oxygen to go up to Mount Walden and deal with this.
We have a surprise coming out, some additional footage up there, so.
All right, Ruby.
Thanks.
Thanks, Russ. Lauren?
No council come.
Okay, mayor's comment, I would just like to thank city staff, DPW, and all of our first responders in the community for. Keeping folks safe during the extreme weather event we had over the past several days. I know, I know it was tough for everybody that has to deal with moving snow and keeping people safe and responding to, to emergency calls, so. A big thank you to all the folks that were involved in that, and with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? By the second. Second. Would the clerk, please call the roll?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Do it. I think it's adjourned.